A chance to look at the sun yesterday during the total eclipse, all right. And just if anybody's interested, the Orioles are winning three to one against the Red Sox in the sixth inning. Let's hope that continues through the day. So thanks, everybody, for coming. We're going to start off. Many of you have heard me say that this is a very thoughtful county council, and it's not only the members that provide a great deal of enthusiasm to the table, but we also have outstanding staff members. And so I want to turn it over to Councilman Ortell to introduce a new member of his staff.
Yes, so I would like to welcome a new member of my staff, Jora Kenua. Jora is a graduate of Towson University, and she joined us yesterday, and I think we sufficiently bored her and scared her at the same time, and she's, but she's hit the ground running already and working on a bunch of things for us, and we're happy to have you aboard.
Okay, welcome aboard, Jora. Okay, thanks so much. We're going to start with appointments, so we're under miscellaneous business for anyone following along. And Councilman Young, we have an appointment to the Board of Appeals for you, and I think it's Mr. Fred Lauer. Come on up, Mr. Lauer. Yeah. Right over here, Mr. Lauer. Yes. Okay, well, that's, you know, Fred, you're a very distinguished person, so we need to do it formally. Sure. Mr. Councilman Young, did you want me to go ahead and introduce? Okay. Mr. Lauer, I've known you for many years, back when you were with the city of Baltimore, I think, in the law department or finance department?
Council services.
Council services.
Yeah.
And so would you like to talk a little bit about your background?
Sure, be happy to give you a brief summary of my background. And first, I'd like to thank Councilman Young for the appointment or reappointment here, and thank the council for considering it. I have represented, after leaving the city of Baltimore, I went to law school during that time, and I have represented a variety of interests throughout my legal career, including big developers, builders, individual business people, neighborhood groups, nonprofits, et cetera, mostly in the zoning area, which fits very well with this appointment, as was said last time, I think. My experience with the board has been a good one over the last three years, and I think the council itself, probably if you could see the inner workings of the board, would be, I think they'd be proud of the way they work, how diligent they are, how they take the facts and the law into consideration. We've had many, many debates over this last year on various and sundry issues, applying the law and facts, and I think the council has done well with the appointments they've made so far. Of course, the present company excluded, but the board, I think, is doing a good job, and they're very conscientious and hardworking, and try to apply to the facts of the law. So that's a brief summary of.
Thank you. Councilman Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Fred, just wanted to thank you for the willingness to serve previously and to continue to serve. Our conversations leading up to this end, one, what your interests are, and then how you want to continue to, you know, fill the role that you've been in, when you've been an asset to me and to the folks at District One, and look forward to, we, one, your continued work on the Board of Appeals, and just being a wealth of information for me moving forward in my position. So thank you, and I look forward to voting for you.
Thank you.
Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Mr. Lauer? Okay, I'll just make one. Councilman Young, you may not know this about Mr. Lauer, but I do, that back in the day, Mr. Lauer was an outstanding softball player, back in the day. That's not on your resume?
I think that was left off along with when I worked on the railroad way back when.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Lauer.
Thank you very much. Have you excuse?
Yes, absolutely, thank you. Okay, our next appointment is an appointment for Councilman Crandall, Mr. Brian Pennington.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Pennington. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure, sure. I've been practicing law for approximately 23 years now, born and raised in southeast Baltimore County, still reside there, and I currently still practice there. My practice mainly consists of three major areas. I do a lot of will and estate work. We do criminal traffic, and we do some personal injury, along with civil litigation. So being on the board, so what has really helped me as far as on the board is my, is my experience in the courtroom, you know, being in front of a judge, knowing the rules of evidence, and knowing how to basically litigate a case. So that's really, that really has come in handy throughout the past three years of being on the board. So, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Crandall for reappointing me, and so to thank the council for considering me as well.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Councilman Crandall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian, thank you so much for your service in your first term, and thank you for your willingness to serve for another term. Mr. Pennington takes his job on the Board of Appeals very seriously, and I think is called upon to, if I'm not mistaken, chair, chair some of the hearings, and is responsible for a lot of the drafting of opinions, and from what I understand, works very well with the other members of the Board of Appeals, and is a credit to our district and Baltimore County. The only thing that I don't like is he doesn't call me and ask for my opinion on a particular case. There's a reason for that, is because he's an upstanding member of the bar and knows that that would be a conflict, so he does not bother me one bit on what my opinions on a particular case may be. But I do appreciate his professionalism, and again, thank you for your willingness to serve on the Board of Appeals, and I hope that my colleagues agree with me that Brian is an asset to Baltimore County.
Thank you, Councilman Crandall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Brian.
Any of the members have any comments, questions, or thoughts to share with Mr. Pennington? Okay, so thank you so much, Mr. Pennington.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, our next item is an appointment, and this is for the county administrative officer, DeAndrea Walker. Ms. Walker is here. Good afternoon, Ms. Walker. Ms. Walker, we all know you, but for the, for everyone in attendance, could you tell us a little bit about your background?
Sure. Well, I've been around for three decades in state service, state service and local service. I've had the opportunity to work for four governors and three county executives. During my time in the governor's office, I had the privilege of being the director to the Board of Public Works, so I cut my teeth on being the director to the Board of Public Works, did some intergovernmental relations when I worked in the governor's office as well. I then left the governor's office and moved to MDOT Transportation in particular. I happened to work alongside of Secretary John Pocari, who went on to be the deputy secretary in federal government. It was very interesting, to just tell you a little story, my goal was to go there and to learn all of the modes, but most of you all may remember when the wheels started to fall off the buses. I then got appointed to go over and be the chief of staff at MTA when the wheels started falling off the buses, because we needed someone who had some experience, and John Pocari asked me to go over and be chief of staff at MTA. I then moved on from MTA. I did a little bit of work at Motor Vehicle Administration. I was responsible for the 25 branch locations and the Veep stations, so I had statewide oversight, operational oversight for all of those locations. And I then went on to be the deputy secretary at Department of General Services, where I picked up the majority of my procurement experience, dealing with MBE, small business. And as you know, DGS is responsible for all of the procurements, the large procurements for the state, Government House and the State House. So I had a nice run at DGS. I enjoyed working at DGS, but then I got a call to come back to MTA and be the chief administrative officer there at MTA, where I worked with several unions. We did binding arbitration. I was responsible for binding arbitration. I was responsible for hiring, HR, procurement. So all administrative services within MTA I was responsible for. I went on, and I had some experience in DC. Didn't like DC. I prefer Maryland, I'm just going to say. And I came back to Maryland and worked in Prince George's County, and I did transportation in Prince George's County. We actually had 27 routes in Prince George's County. Transportation has always been my first love. I know a lot of people don't like to hear me say that, especially at Public Works, but it will always be my first. So I had a good time in Prince George's County, managing transportation in Prince George's County, and then I literally came to Baltimore County to start the circulator system. When I first looked into Baltimore County, I actually said, no, you all don't have transportation, so I'm not sure that that's what I want to do. And then we had multiple conversations back and forth, and it was about starting transportation here. And I remember living in Baltimore County and having to take my son up the road because he couldn't walk to a bus stop and catch a bus. And I thought, how excited I could be a part of that change. And I've had a great time here in Baltimore County, and just to see the fruition of what we've been able to do in Public Works and Transportation, and for my children to see what we've been able to do in Public Works and Transportation. I'm excited about what I can bring to the table and offer as the administrative officer here for Baltimore County as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Walker. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Ms. Walker? Councilman Katch?
Hi, just a couple of questions. Who was the head of MVA when you were there?
When I was there, John Quo was the administrator.
Okay, and then who was DGS secretary?
Alvin Collins. He was the chief of staff for Governor Glenn, Glenn Denon, and then he went on and came over to be secretary at DGS.
Thank you. Oh, no.
Okay, do any of the members have any additional questions, comments, or thoughts? And just for clarification, when Ms. Walker said the wheels were coming off the bus, it was not a metaphor. The wheels were coming off of the buses.
Yeah.
And so that was something that was certainly urgent, so thank you for your work there and making sure that the wheels stay on the bus. It is both literal, and it is a metaphor for how we should work as, in governance.
I tell you, I've had the opportunity to work in some crisis situations, and I think it's prepared me for this position in particular. I look forward to being able to use my skills throughout the state. You also know Board of Public Works, back during the Glenn Denon times, there was some tension. We had a mayor there, and we had a governor there, and we had, you know, there was some tension there during those times. So I cut my teeth on learning procurements and learning how to strategize and collaborate and make sure that we had the best product for the state. There was a, there was a high level of expectation from the governor in terms of making sure you gave him a good product, and you looked at the whole picture. So I think I bring that to this position. I'm proud of the work that we've done at DPWNT, from starting the loop, from bringing back bulk trash. Most recently, last week, you all got a letter from me where we started a whole new website where you can see the projects that we have here in Baltimore County. We've done a number of things. Customer service has been at the top level for me as a leader in DPWNT, as well as being able to listen, to listen to the needs and not, not just assume that you know what people want. One of the things that I've had conversation with my staff about is we're not necessarily on the ground, so it's always worth a conversation, so that you can see the whole picture and make sure that you're actually hearing what the needs are, and not assuming what the needs are.
It's interesting, Ms. Walker, that you bring up your experience at the Board of Public Works, because I've always, part of the way Baltimore County's structure is, the way the charter identifies our functions, at the Board of Public Works of the state of Maryland, they approve a whole host of fiscal matters and contractual matters for the state of Maryland. Similarly, the Board of Estimates in Baltimore City approves a whole host of fiscal matters and contractual matters and agreements. And here in Baltimore County, we do not have an equivalent body of the Board of Public Works or Board of Estimates, as Baltimore City does, but this council is that equivalent body.
That's right.
And so I think it's, Ms. Rogers has done this well over the years, and don't make me cry, Ms. Rogers, but has done really well over the years in ensuring that we, as that equivalent body to the Board of Public Works and to the Board of Estimates, that we, and as I also will say, that our attorneys here, Mr. Boswick and Mr. Phillips, help us quite a bit in these areas, as does the auditors, and so that we are not making these decisions without having a knowledge base on what the contract is and what the fiscal implications are. So I think that's an important role for county administrative officer. Anyone else? Councilman Marks?
Thank you very much. Ms. Walker, thank you for our conversation the other day. We crossed paths at Maryland Department of Transportation. There were two crises going on at that time. One was the wheels coming off the bus. That was toward the end of the Glenn Denon administration. And then there was also the paratransit issue that we worked through under the Ehrlich administration. I just have one question, it's just generally, what is your philosophy toward the relationship between the legislative branch and the executive branch? And I'm going to pick an example. This council passed legislation that recommended, that allowed for neighborhood common zoning on zoning on properties. And my understanding is that the planning staff has not recommended that on many properties at all. I see this, the legislative branch as enacting the laws, passing the laws, and the executive branch, to the greatest extent possible, enforcing the laws and executing the laws. Would you generally agree with that?
Generally.
There can be pushback, right? And we have a county attorney who's very able and kind of guide us through where there's some blurring of things, but generally, that's the philosophy, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and to the extent that there are disagreements, you'll work with us, and we'll try to come to some consensus.
What I was, what I would say to you, Councilman Marks, is that I ask that you use the experience of the job that I've done at Public Works and Transportation. I always think it's important to have a conversation. I always call if I foresee that there's going to be a difference in opinion with the council and what Public Works and Transportation is doing, and I will continue that process, because it has to be a collaborative effort in order for us to, to be able to have the best outcome for the residents of the county. I am not naive to think that we're all going to agree on everything, but I am, I do have the belief that we're all professionals, and we can have a conversation and come to some common ground that's in the best interest of the residents.
And the CAO is really, our CAO has done a very nice job. Ms. Rogers has done a very good job. Sometimes takes on tasks that are, that take years to get finished. The Mount Vista Park land transfer at the state took about eight years, and I think it's still not quite done at the Board of Public Works, but it does require a lot of time, and someone who's going to be working with us to get those things finished. So I do think having the state perspective is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any of the other members have any questions, comments, or thoughts? Councilman Crandall?
Hi, Ms. Walker. I think that our offices, in your tenure at DPWT, our offices worked well together. You and your staff have been very responsive to us, and in some instances, fixed problems immediately, and other instances, had to educate us, and took, and your staff took the time to educate us as laymen on how to, on how a particular problem was going to be addressed. So I do appreciate that. I do, however, you're certainly aware of some public criticism that you've received, I think, from former employees, correct?
Yes, sir.
Would you, would you like to address that now, give you the opportunity to address it now? Because I understand that we have two speakers today.
Okay.
So it's, I don't know if it's the elephant in the room or not, but we might as well just get it out there.
It doesn't need to be the elephant in the room. I'll address it.
Okay.
So what I will tell you is that I've not fired one employee from DPWNT. I do have very high expectations, because we all get a paycheck. And there is an expectation that we are hired to do a job, and we're hired to do it at a certain level. And that is the expectation that I have as a leader. But before I was able to become a leader, I was a follower. There's rules, there's regulations, there's codes. There are things that we are held accountable for delivering on, and that is my expectation as a leader. As the director of DPWNT, that is my expectation. I believe in one-on-ones. I believe in performance reviews, and I believe in documenting when it's needed. I don't believe in mistreating an employee, and no employee can come up here and tell you that I ever have mistreated them. As a matter of fact, if I'm being completely honest, I was shocked when I saw a former employee in the newspaper talk about me, because I've never written that employee up. I've never said a bad word about that employee. But I do have an obligation, if you are trespassing on county property, to report it. Otherwise, I'm not doing my duty. So I was frankly hurt about it, because I've not done anything to that employee for that employee to say the things that they're saying about me, that my children have to read about me. And as a matter of fact, when the reporter called me, I said, I have nothing to say because I'm shocked, because what I would say about that employee is that that employee was a good employee. So frankly, I'm taken back by it. And I'm hurt by it, because I've done nothing but treated them with respect the whole time that I was there. I walked into a situation at DPWNT where people didn't want to work for me, not because I wasn't capable, but frankly, because I don't look like a lot of other people. But that's okay. That's quite all right, because I didn't come here for that. I came here to do a job, and I'm okay with doing that job respectfully. But if you talk to the majority of the employees that I work with every day, or the majority of the employees that I've worked with in past years, and let me tell you, I can line them up. I've gotten more calls, I've gotten more flowers, I've gotten more greetings, that it has absolutely humbled me to make me think, how is it that people knew about me taking this position? But you know why? It's because I treat people with respect, because I want people to treat me with respect. I wouldn't dare get up on this stand and lie about somebody, and I don't know why people feel the need to do it, but it's okay, because I'm not going anywhere. I worked hard to get this job, and I prayed on this job. I prayed on this job before I took a job, because the job has to be a good job for me, and it's got to be a good job for who I'm going to work for. That has always been my deciding factor. It's not about the money. It's because it's what I want to do. It's because I think I can make a difference. But nobody will ever be able to get up here and tell you that I've mistreated them. Maybe I didn't take their advice, but that's my prerogative, because at the end of the day, the decision lies with me, and I take that seriously, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Councilman Crandall, any additional questions?
Sure, and Ms. Walker, I, I didn't bring it up to attempt to embarrass you in any way.
I don't believe you did.
But because it was, because it was, it was already public, and this is a public forum.
Yes, sir.
I felt that you deserved the opportunity to have a say in the matter.
I appreciate it.
So I hope you know where I was coming from.
I definitely.
I was not trying to put you on the spot.
I don't believe, you know, several people have asked me to address it, and I didn't because, because I don't have anything adverse to say about them.
Understood. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman Crandall. Councilman Ortell, and then we'll come to Councilman Katch.
I think Councilman, oh, is Councilman Jones trying to chime in?
Yes, I was, but I will wait till Councilman Ortell is done.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Director Walker, I just wanted to say that when I came in as a new councilperson, the one thing I'll always remember is they, they send the new councilpeople around to the different departments to talk about how the department works, and I think one of the, one of my favorites was coming to DPWT, and you had the whole, you know, team in there, and I felt instantly like you guys were all family, and you worked well together and were very positive, knowing that you have a hard task in that department of dealing with a lot of issues, from roads to sewers to, you know, you name it, we have it in DPW and T. And I just want to say, I appreciated that, and you've always worked well, I know with my colleagues, but as a new councilperson, we've, you know, I have one of the, we all have districts that need attention, but I, you know, I have one of the inner Beltway districts that have a lot of issues, and you've always been responsive, and your, and your people have always been responsive, and I, I've always had a very fine opinion of, of the department and the way you run it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Ortell. Councilman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take an opportunity to say, number one, that, you know, I appreciate this Walker and the work she's doing, and I certainly want to take this opportunity to thank Stacy Rogers for her hard work and dedication and all the service she provided to Baltimore County in that position. But today, we're talking about you, Ms. Walker, and I wanted to just thank you for the work you have done. I think you have always worked very well with me and my colleagues, if they don't mind me saying so. And I know early on, we used to talk amongst ourselves about the fact that you were somebody you could talk to. You were a person that we could talk to and get to a place where we all were satisfied and happy and felt that something was happening. And I can think of many cases where, once I got it to your level and spoke with you about it, and we had conversations, and like I think Councilman Crandall said, it didn't always go my way, but at the end of the day, I always understood the rationale, and I know that when you could help, you did, and you would. So I look forward to your confirmation, and look forward to working with you and having you do the great job you've been doing so far. So thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to say that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. We're going to go to Councilman Katch.
Yeah, thank you very much. I also want to thank you for the job that you've done. You've always been very open, very transparent, and I appreciate it, willingness to meet with constituents at the site, which, which is just so important to me. Will you take the job this coming Monday, or what?
Well, if I'm fortunate enough.
I mean, I, how?
To get the votes.
Okay.
I will come.
So you have one week to get all the... So you have one week to get all the roads paved, on the list that I gave you.
I was going to tell everybody we agreed to that. I was going to tell everybody.
And, and secondly, on a serious note, you realize that should our county executive become a member of Congress, that, do you know who will be the acting county executive? You. You knew that.
Yes, sir.
You knew that. So I, yeah, it's temporary, but it's going to be quite a responsibility. And I want to be the first person to talk with you then, because I'll have another list of things for you. But again, thank you very much for the job.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do any of the other members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Walker. And Ms. Bel Castro, I understand we have a couple of speakers. Thanks again, Ms. Walker.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right, just give it a second. Okay, Ms. Bel Castro?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our first speaker is Whitney Dudley, who is here in person.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, gentlemen, and thank you for this opportunity. I had a prepared speech, but after hearing Ms. Walker, I think there's a couple of things that I would like to address from a retiree who used to work in DPWNT. It's stunning to me that Ms. Walker would state that the reason why there are people that might disagree with her is because she doesn't look like them. And this is something that nobody's supposed to talk about. But that seemed to be a motivation, Ms. Walker had a motivation to eliminate people that didn't necessarily look like her. And I think that that's really important to point out. There was never, on the boots on the ground, the people that worked at DPWNT that had years of experience, years of knowledge, were good mentors to others. There was a mass exodus, and there was a reason for that. And it wasn't, it didn't have anything to do with the fact that Ms. Walker didn't look like them. And I find it insulting to use that as a talking point, because that's not what anyone was talking about. This is a huge responsibility. This is a large amount of money. This is trying to keep track of, making sure that the county keeps its bond rating. There's an understanding for what it means when you borrow money, what the decisions, the fiscal decisions that have to do with county employees, retirees, their health insurance, those kinds of things, navigation of those. Also, the county taxpayers. I mean, this is a huge responsibility that I believe needs to have someone that has expertise in these areas. We all know that Ms. Walker did not have the credentials to become the Director of Public Works as it stood. And it had to go through legislation in order to appoint her. That was concerning to a lot of people that worked in DPWNT. We're talking about infrastructure, we're talking about engineers, we're talking about people that had years of experience, that were told to do things that they knew were not what they should be doing. And for Ms. Walker to say that she wanted to uphold county rules is not always true. She has many accomplishments, and I recognize that. But I'm not sure that her appointment to this position is appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dudley. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Ms. Dudley? Okay, thank you. Thanks. Okay, Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Michael Beachler, who is here in person.
That she was always a gentle lady, and I appreciate that, and I thank her for that. However, this is not about charm skills. Thank you for letting me speak succinctly and to the point. I should not be here before you this evening. Why? Number one, the county executive appointed an unqualified acting director of public works, Ms. Walker. Number two, Ms. Walker, for two years, worked in this acting capacity in violation of County Code 406(c) entitled Limitation of Term. County code is the law. Not only was Ms. Walker unqualified, her term was unlawful. And I will acknowledge that Ms. Walker, Ms. Walker was made kosher, but only after significant Machiavellian political machinations, which took two years. Number three, during her unlawful term in office, I served as the bureau chief under her and filed six complaints with the inspector general's office, with copious records and documentation of each complaint over two years ago. Yet those complaints have not seen the light of day. As you're all aware of, for making these complaints, Ms. Walker was a co-conspirator in sicking the Baltimore County Police Department upon me. I'm here. I would not be here if the county executive nominated qualified people. I wouldn't be here if the county code, county law, had been obeyed. I wouldn't be here if the inspector general had filed her findings. And what has happened to DPW under Ms. Walker? Take the former bureau that I was responsible for, solid waste. I woke up one morning and realized that my bureau was for sale by the county executive through Ms. Walker, to which I filed a complaint. My successor is now a fine young man named Nicholas Rodricks, whom I hired, and in no way am I disparaging him. When I hired Mr. Rodricks, who is not an engineer, he was only an intern. Four months after my retirement, and only 16 months after coming to work, Ms. Walker appointed Mr. Rodricks as bureau chief over experienced bureau professional engineers. Now, did you get that? Ms. Walker, in her unqualified and illegal acting capacity, hires an unqualified person as bureau chief, who only 16 months before was an intern over professional engineers. And that is how the Department of Public Works and Transportation works today. Lastly, the question now before you is really one of governance, because that is the CEO's job. My experience with Ms. Walker's governance is outlined in my March 27 letter to you and the documentation of that letter, as given to the inspector general and Ms. Melkison. If you approve of Ms. Walker's nomination, expect more of the same. And you will have appointed her to either investigate herself or to cover up whatever investigations there are. Remember, the county council's constitutional job is to balance the executive branch when it is out of balance and kilter, and it is. Please do your jobs and not confirm Ms. Walker.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beachler. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share? Okay, thanks again, Mr. Beachler. Did I pronounce that right? Beachler?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good to see you all.
Sure. Same here. Okay. Ms. Bel Castro, do you have any additional speakers?
No, Mr. Chair.
We are now going to move, so if anyone's keeping up with the agenda, we just completed miscellaneous business, and we're going to, since this is the first work session of our newly adopted young procedures, we are going to call bills for final reading and vote first, and then we're going to go after that to, or we'll intermix between that and our new category called Bills for First Consideration. Okay. So first, we're going to do, we're going to do Bill 924. And Bill 924, and I'll briefly go over it and let everybody know where we've been. We had a bill that was introduced some time ago, Bill 324, which allowed for mixed-use application across the county. It was related, it was pretty, it was pretty much data-driven and created nodes. That bill was withdrawn by the county executive in consultation, my colleagues and with the county, well, in consultation with my colleagues, met with the county executive, we came up with a bill that was, it's been termed the compromise bill, and it's Bill 924. The framework of the bills are similar. The difference is that Bill 324 was purely data-driven. Bill 924, and it was data-driven and, and targeted towards nodes. And nodes were identified in Master Plan 2030. Bill 924 used that framework, but instead of totally being data-driven, it, it was an attempt, and, is Ms. Walker still here? Ms. Walker, I want to talk about this bill in relation to your work ahead, because we talked about this in, in our meeting this week, when you were coming around to, to talk about your plans as CAO. But one of the discussions we had is data-driven governance is a good thing to do. You know, when different departments, different agencies talk about data-driven initiatives. And that's all really good, except that you, in order to do the jobs that we do, we need to have some semblance, some mixture, some weaving in of community sentiment. And so that's what Bill 924 does. It takes the data, and then it weaves in community sentiment. How does it do that? Each of the council members here, night after night, we're going out to community meetings, and we are understanding community sentiment at a level that I don't think any other county, any county entity is gaining that level of knowledge. And so that's where 924 comes in, where it uses the idea of mixed use. It makes it part of the CZMP, the Comprehensive Zoning Map process, that is something that the, my colleagues, it's driven, there's a year-long process, but it's, it does allow for broad authority for the county council. And so then, it identifies this overlay district, and that overlay district is the MU, or Mixed Use Overlay District, to be determined by, at this point, a council member in this CZMP, and in future CZMPs, it'll be through the process. And it also, another key factor to this, the MU overlay district, and this is really important, it allows for MU to be designated in areas where we have infrastructure, in areas where we have infrastructure. And so that way, we feel, I think the sponsors and some of the supporters that have weighed in, that it allows for, for it to be suitable for communities, and we're weaving in community sentiment with the data-driven information. We had a really good stakeholders' meeting this afternoon, where we had a pretty robust testimony a few weeks ago. We called in those, some subject matter experts, and some of the folks that participated several weeks ago, had a really robust meeting. I think many of the participants are going to speak again at the work session today. But I just wanted to share with everybody how we got to Bill 924 and what some of the elements are. Any of my colleagues wish to comment, or Councilman Ortel?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say a quick few words. We know that in Baltimore County, we don't have a lot of virgin green land anymore. So most of our development in the future will be redevelopment of sites. And we're hoping that this legislation gives another tool that will be used for redevelopment of residential, possibly where we haven't had it before. It also has an inclusionary housing element to it. So hopefully, we can provide some affordable housing in market-rate buildings that we've, we really have not ever done here in Baltimore County, even though surrounding jurisdictions like Howard County and Montgomery County have done it for many years. And we're, we're hoping that this leads to, you know, a movement there where we mix in that housing with, with regular housing and not concentrate poverty all in one place in, in buildings by themselves. So we did have this, we had a conversation this afternoon, or earlier today, had a lot of good comments. I think there was a lot of agreement, and we're, we're trying to iron this out so that we can have a bill that, again, that we, we can be hopefully proud of and that is useful in the future.
Thank you, Councilman Ortel. Any of the other members have any questions, thoughts, or comments? Councilman Cash?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There were, there was a meeting at noon that everyone's referring to, and I appreciate so much all the input from people from various communities in the county. And the comments that were made were very helpful to us, very helpful. And I just want to say how much I appreciate it, and also want to thank the chairman of the council for organizing the meeting. And, you know, this, to me, this is the way that legislation should be dealt with. And it brings me back to my days in the state legislature, when we did a lot of this, meeting as a group with people and their input, very helpful and very constructive. So I thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Councilman Cash. Okay, Councilman Crandall?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I will not even come close to voting for this bill. Bill 324 was not data-driven, it was policy-driven, and the data was made to fit the policy narrative. 324 was a sick dog. And when you take a sick dog to the vet and the vet says, "Put it down," you don't make a compromise with the vet to keep the dog alive. So I don't know where the compromise came from. I was never part of any of those discussions. I wasn't aware of a so-called stakeholder meeting today. No one made me aware of that. I don't believe that any member of the 7th District was part of the so-called stakeholder meeting. I also feel that introducing a new zone four months before the council votes on our CZMP decisions is a disservice to our citizens. How in the world can you create a brand-new zone four months before we're supposed to vote on it? Or vote, vote on, on properties that are, that are an issue? And spring a brand-new zone of high-density housing into your districts? I don't understand how you can do it. Because you're trying to save face with the administration? They introduced a bad bill to us. They knew we weren't going to vote for it, so they withdrew it. Story over. We have a process for undertaking high-density unit housing. It's called a planned unit development process. It's worked quite well in my district. It's not a broken system. It works. That's how we should approach projects like this that fall outside of current, current zoning regulations. This bill takes away all of the leverage and therefore the community has with developers trying to negotiate a project that would fit into our districts. So this bill takes away all of our leverage and all of our negotiation ability, negotiating ability, to set design standards with our communities and have developers follow those design standards. It does not allow us to negotiate number of dwelling units, as we do in a planned unit development process where we hold the cards. It does not enable us to extract a community benefit from a high-density housing project, which is what mixed-use development is. So I, once this passes, which I assume that it will, I will not be placing this on any properties in the 7th District, simply because no one in my community knows anything about this zone. And I'm going to have to, if I do place it on it... And I'm going to have to, if I do place it on, on a particular property, I'm going to have to explain to them why I picked a zoning classification out of thin air that we just made up, and now you have to live with it. And whatever, whatever the developer gives you, and whatever the administrative review wants to, wants to provide, and what other design review panel wants to say for that particular project, that's what goes, what the community has to say doesn't matter. I don't think that that is the right road for us to be going down, where you're taking away the authority of the Baltimore County Council, authority that is granted to us by the charter, especially for huge changes inside of our communities. The community will have one say, if I read the bill correctly, the community will have one say, and then once this project is filed and it's under administrative review, we are, the council, we are prohibited from participating in the process once it reaches that point by the charter. So unless there's a charter change coming about that I don't know about, another thing I won't know about, then what are we doing up here? I don't understand it.
Councilman Crandall, could I ask you?
Yes.
The bill was circulated to you?
It was.
And you had a chance to read it, and did you go out and share that with your community leaders and ask them what they thought about it?
No, I did not. I don't need to. I don't need to, because they know, they know me, and they know what I will do if, if a project like this is proposed in my district. I'll take it to them first.
Well, part of-
This is your bill. Did you poll my constituents?
I polled my constituents.
Okay.
And I've been out at community meetings every night, I think. Yeah, every night.
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, no, I didn't, because this is a, this is a complete no for me.
But how do you know if your constituents want it or not?
Oh, I can tell you they don't want it.
But see, I think if you, I mean, everybody has their own style. We each have our own styles. My style-
Well, I tell you what, Councilman, you, you come down to the 7th District and tell them that you want to put zones in the 7th District that have, what is inclusionary housing, is that now the new term for subsidized? Tell them, tell them that you want to incentivize developers to put more subsidized housing in the 7th District, and let me, let me see how that goes for you. Thank you.
Okay. Do any of the members have any additional, Councilmen, Councilmen? Young, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I appreciate the work you put in on the bill, and hopeful that the stakeholder meeting that you had earlier also produces some fruit and some language that I think addresses some concerns. When we held it over and you went openly, talked about having a stakeholder meeting, trying to be hopeful, hopeful, because I'm balancing my understanding that we need as a county to be able to recognize and define mixed use in a way that it's currently not defined in our, in our code of regulations right now. Been talking about this in my district with the administration since getting here, which has led to legislation, and I also have to give credit to Councilman Crandall's point that he's making related to the fact that we are doing this during C Z M P. And while we're talking about the hope that by passing this will incentivize and hopefully lead to utilizing mixed use in our planning, our development, where, where at this point, it's only allowable in areas that are currently have a zoning issue in. So anybody that might have been able to participate, or might have wanted to capitalize on this for that purpose that we're trying to address, has to wait four years. Well, at this point, no, longer than four years, because they can't put an issue in in order to take advantage of it, because we can't add it. We can only lay this in an area that's, that currently has an issue in, so we're already pigeonholing ourselves or cutting our legs out from under us and having to utilize this because of the overlay method. I'm pointing that out of giving credit where credit's due. Councilman Crandall has a point of wrestle with that myself, with the need for being able to be dynamic in our code when it comes to mixed use, and being able to recognize what the county needs to move forward, what our challenges are, and what we're trying to address with that, which is why it's been so controversial. It's why there's been so many passionate folks that have come out in support, and also in folks that have come out in opposition, because of what they think it means versus what it does, what the intent is versus what the, the thought, the thought of what an intent is, what the purpose is. I think at the end of the day, working together with the other members and with stakeholders that have been included in the process, coming, coming together for a bill that's better than the original one that was produced, and one from the executive and one that's better than the one that you introduced is, we're close, and I appreciate your work on it and your ability to engage with the other members on it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Young, and just want to add some, some observations to the process. So first, in terms of precedent, there is some precedent to this. I think cycles, many cycles ago, there were, I think in 2016, we, the council then created an N C overlay?
2012.
In 12, and Councilman Marks told me it's in 12, created an N C overlay, a neighborhood commons overlay that we used. I know I used it the last cycle, and that was created while we were in process and was applied, and you're correct, it was applied to areas that had an issue placed upon it. And I think, and I'm just going to remind everybody, and hate to go back to this, but how, how did we get to this point of being so late in the C Z M P process? And so part of it is, our Master Plan 2030 was three years late when it was presented to the county council. The county council had to, we had some issues related to accessibility in terms of being in print at public libraries, and for a variety of reasons, I mean, it was delayed about three and a half years for that. There was another six months when we didn't just, for one reason or another, we did not put it on the agenda. It was a decision by the chair at that time not to put it on the agenda, so it, it was on the agenda in our first meeting of this year. And so as we were deliberating, and I want to thank my colleagues because the deliberations were robust, everybody had thoughtful comments, and so that took a month or two in itself. And so at the same time, this theme of nodes and mixed use was in the master plan that was three and a half years late, four years late. And so it had this theme of mixed use, and that presented itself in Bill 324. And so Bill 324 came out before we had an adopted master plan, because it was four years late. And at the same time, we were backing up against the C Z M P, which has set timeframes in it. So we were crunching in a theme of the master plan before the master plan was approved, while we were pressed against C Z M P. And so I think in that hurried process, we didn't have enough time. Had we approved the master plan on its regular cycle in February of 2020, this would have been behind us. We would have had a mixed-use bill in place. Applicants in the C Z M P could have put in an issue for mixed-use overlay, had we gotten to this, not four years late, but in a timely cycle. So I just want to add kind of an overview of the time challenges that we are working with. Do any of the members have any additional questions, comments? Councilman Marks?
Thank you very much. I just have four observations. There's a two-story limit on structures, correct?
Correct.
What if a one-story grocery store wants to be part of a project?
We had a good discussion about that this afternoon, and those are some of the, the modifications we'll be considering.
Okay. Secondly, it says that we're going to use the comprehensive manual of design development policies as the guide. Could we also consider incorporating other design manuals, design policies already adopted by the council? For example, Towson Standards, community plans, whatever?
Yes.
We could look at that, okay. Thirdly, the legislation has the design review panel recommendations binding on the administrative law judge. Just a rhetorical question, does that take the community out of the equation if they disagree with the D R P recommendations?
Well, that's an interesting question, Councilman Marks. We had that robust discussion on that at the stakeholders group, and two of the, I think they were both attorneys, yes, both of the attorneys used an oil painting metaphor. And the metaphor was used in this way, Councilman Marks. They said that in a, at a D R P meeting, it's like one oil painter that is presenting his oil, his or her oil paint to seven other oil painters, and they're deciding whether it's acceptable. And so we talked about that. It was an interesting discussion. I think some of the, I see some smiles on some of the faces of participants. The big difference is, you know, we can have that discussion about the quality of the oil painting, but at the end of the day, somebody's going to leave an oil painting in a neighborhood, in a community, that may not like that oil painting. And so that's kind of some of the discussion we have. So I think we're going to be touching the language and trying to make it stronger and fit all of the, all of the interests that were presented today.
Yeah, and the fourth observation was, I, I see we're now, we're allowing hotels by special exception. I think maybe an early draft had them as a prohibition. So I do think there, there is a place for hotels and mixed-use developments, right? So I was happy to see that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Any of the members have any additional comments, questions, or thoughts? Okay. Ms. Bel Castro, do we have speakers?
Yes, we do. Mr. Chair, our first speaker is Greg DeHoff, who is here in person.
Before we get to the speaker, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Jones.
I guess wanted to, I guess, follow up on the timeline, and I, I think you did a reasonable job on the timeline, but I think you forgot about the word COVID. And I think that was the driver of why the master plan was late beginning to us, as well as a lot of other things. And I guess feel the need to say, you know, a lot of other things was going on at the time, and that's why, including the accessibility issue, how we wanted the master plan to be printed. I don't think it took a traditional six months, but there was a delay when we received it. That part is true. Not really sure it was six months, but I guess wanted to clarify that part and sort of inject the word COVID, because that was the reason that the master plan was late from the very beginning.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilman Jones. I'm sorry, Mr. DeHoff.
Chairman Patoka, members of the county council, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again in reference to this bill. Bills like this concern me greatly, but I think have the potential to do a lot of good. We need to make sure that it doesn't do harm, though. Please make sure this bill does not hurt the existing infrastructure and residents in the areas where the mixed-use overlay is applied, and also that it does not have unintended consequences. I believe so many bills are written to correct issues or problems that are currently occurring that the long-range effect of those bills is never considered or understood. Do not let this be the case for this bill. Infrastructure problems should be addressed and corrected before mixed-use overlays are applied. Also, police shortages should be addressed before the mixed-use overlay is applied. From my perspective, and I've stated this before, the transportation system in Baltimore County, especially northern Baltimore County, is not effective and does not encourage ridership, and should not be considered as part of any answer to the infrastructure issues until it itself is improved. Any new development needs to have plans to protect what already exists, and to protect the citizens of Baltimore County, your constituents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeHoff. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts? Okay, thanks, Mr. DeHoff. Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Steve Whalen, who is here in person.
Good afternoon, Mr. Whalen.
I am Steve Whalen. I am a real estate developer from Catonsville. I had the pleasure of attending the meeting this, noon this afternoon, and I want to thank you personally, Mr. Patoka, for arranging it. It was, at times, interesting, as the old Chinese proverb used, used to be, may you live in interesting times. Well, this is an interesting issue that I think challenges all of us, and there's good news and bad news on, on both sides. I also understand where Councilman Crandall is coming from, and I empathize with your position as well. I just want to talk again about some details that I've talked about before. Limited exemptions aren't permitted, but the county has always taken the position that if the development originated in a different way, then that would be consistent throughout the development. And so for existing mixed-use developments, I think the, however, however the project originated is, is how that that should continue. Hotels, Councilman Marks addressed it, shouldn't be by special exception, that should be permitted, it permitted use in a B M zone. We talked before about liquor stores, we talked before about car wash and fuel service. Why, why not at least give the developer an opportunity to make a case, and you could do that with a special exception? As I said before, nobody thinks that car washes are sexy, but suppose you have substantial residential, you have structured parking, how many times have you seen a car wash put within a, a parking structure, and that provides an amenity to those people who live there? No one-story buildings are permitted. Come on. That, that just doesn't make any sense. The eclectic nature of a development would be improved by differentials in the heights of the buildings. And as I said the last time I was here, you could, you could do a 20-foot, one-story building, and, and you would, you would not have an issue with something like that in a restaurant or whatever. Finally, I would suggest design review panel, which I understand, and I love the analogy of the artist, but I really do think it should be advisory. That's my, the basis of my argumentation today. You also know how I feel. I think about the subsidized housing issue. I understand why the county wants to pursue that, but every location is different, and there are times when that may be absolutely appropriate for the site and the district, and there are times when that doesn't make sense. I think that, as you know, I feel that it's important to raise the standard. That's what I would be looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Do any of the members-
Mr. Chair, Councilman-
Mr. Whalen, if you can indulge me for a second.
Surely.
So if I'm not mistaken, I remember you, you've done at least one planned, planned unit development. You've done a PUD.
I have done a PUD.
Right. Now, would you say that-
Which, which, by the way, the-
I think I voted for one.
Then, yes, you did. The neighbors took it all the way to the, to the Court of Appeals at that point in time, delayed me for five years until the project no longer made sense anymore, but supposedly I won.
Okay. Well, that experience notwithstanding, I suppose, even though it was, you know, probably a hard time and a financial drain for, for your company. But, so you, you mentioned that, okay, maybe one project would work in one place in Baltimore County or in one of our districts, and another project might, might not fit that particular place. So maybe there is an existing one-story building that would, that would fit a mixed-use proposal, right?
Absolutely.
Maybe a three-story building somewhere in Baltimore County may. So it seems to me that the, the PUD process offers more flexibility to the developer, as well as more input, input from the, the council member and the, and the community. So we could, through that process, we could actually potentially accomplish a lot more because we would have control over the legislative language in the PUD as to what would be allowed and what would not be allowed. Are you, do you feel like I'm, I'm making any sense, or?
I don't disagree with what you're saying. Would it work? The answer is yes. I think part of the problem here, and this is me reading in, is that the administration had an objective in mind with this bill, and wanted to make it easier to do the subsidized housing. And- And that's what they're asked, had asked the council to support. Like I said, what might work in Towson or northern Baltimore County might not make sense for your district or frankly, for Catonsville.
Right. And, and I would say that I'm not, I'm not opposed to mixed-use development at all. I've seen it be very successful in other parts of the country, and here in Maryland. It's just that I feel that as the elective representative with land use authority granted by the county charter and holding the office closest to the people, that I think the community deserves a greater say in what happens in their own neighborhoods. And that's why I think the PUD process works well, because that, inherent in that process is that the community is immediately involved. And in my experience, and I think you operate the same way, the developers, when they're proposing, before they even get to application to the council, they're already engaged with the community. They're already talking with them and working, and working matters out. So it seems to me that flexibility and that amount of community input could make these, these types of projects be so much more enhanced and a better fit for neighborhoods, as opposed to putting an overlay on it and having it by right and hope for the best. So that's kind of, that's where I'm coming down on it.
I can only tell you of my experience with my largest project, which, as you all know, I've been trying to hawk for five or six years, and, and needing to add the residential component that's so important today. We actually, through, through Kevin Kaminetz, were able to get the approvals using the exemption process through the DRC. So we didn't have an official public hearing. I've met 25 times with the community on this, informally. And a lot of times, you get more done, as we had an informal meeting today, sitting across the table from people who care about the community from different perspectives, and yet they have an opportunity to talk to each other. So I don't disagree with what you're saying, Mr. Councilman. I don't disagree. There may be more than one way to skin the cat. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman Crandall. Any of the members, Councilman Orteg?
I just had a comment on the inclusionary housing piece of it is not, it's not mandatory. So one of the things is anyone could build a mixed-use development. It doesn't have to have inclusionary housing in it, but it gives a density bonus if there is one.
Well, the issue there is that, no, you don't have to build, but if you want any kind of assistance from Baltimore County now, whether it's TIF or PILOT or anything along that line, if I'm reading the bill as it is presently proposed, you got to do the inclusionary housing or you're not going to get it. So that's a, that's a pretty big negative stick. When I'm trying to build, to upscale my project, do I, do I mis, do I misread it? I, I, I think that that's the case, that.
I think, I think, I think we'll have to look at that again. We'll take a look at that. I, I, I've, I've looked at that, and it's my understanding, the way that the bill is written, is that, I think you're correct, Councilman, in that the inclusionary housing is not a requirement. However, if a developer desires larger density and a larger footprint, there is a requirement for inclusionary housing. And I think if you talk to pretty much any apartment developer that does business in, in Baltimore County, they will tell you that, that subsidized is key to their profitability on any new project. So like Mr. Whalen, I do understand where the administration has come from, is coming from in, in terms of the, the settlement agreement reached in the lawsuit years ago, settlement agreement that, as you know, never came before the council, even for our consideration. It was foisted upon us. So that, that's my understanding, and maybe, I don't know if our, our secretary or draftsman want to comment on that, as far as inclusionary housing and the requirement. If the, if, if the, if the developer is seeking greater density, then will be allowed per square foot.
Mr. Crandall and Mr. Whalen, the page 14 of the bill on line five, it does say, "A development in the MU district that receives county financial support shall enter into an agreement with the county to set aside units for persons of eligible income that supports, as determined by the county, the goal of providing residents access to decent, safe, and sanitary dwellings without overcrowding. And the support may include public-private partnership, TIF, pay, PILOT, grants, loans, guarantees, bonds, and tax credits." So it's not a requirement, but if you do receive financial support in those ways from the county, there is a degree of, of units that will be set aside pursuant to an agreement between the county and the developer.
So if I may, my conundrum is, I think you all know, I'm from Catonsville. I've lived there all my life. I, I really want to push the quality of this development in terms of pricing and everything else, so that the people at the high end of the spectrum in Catonsville who want to move up don't have to move out. In order to do that, to be competitive with Howard County and Montgomery County and places like that, I'm, for example, going to have to do structured parking. It's very expensive to do that. I would, my, my thought, and I've discussed this with the administration over a long period of time, is that I would come back and ask for a TIF, okay, in order to help support the cost of those infrastructure items. And as a matter of fact, the General Assembly, I don't remember, six or seven years ago, authorized a hospital redevelopment TIF, state hospital redevelopment TIF, which we would potentially be eligible for, because we're immediately adjacent to the Spring Grove facility. So that's my issue, is are you now going to tell me, okay, we understand you're trying to be competitive with those other counties, but now you're going to have to include inclusionary housing. Will it work? I don't know. I just don't know.
Any additional questions for Mr. Whalen? Okay, thank you, Mr. Whalen.
Thanks again for this afternoon.
of Council Resolution 15-24, which would approve and prioritize three fiscal year 25 rural legacy area applications that will be submitted to the Maryland Rural Legacy Program. The sponsors for these applications are the Gunpowder Valley Conservancy, the Pine Run Watershed Rural Legacy Program, and Manor Conservancy. The Gunpowder Valley Conservancy is only submitting its application for expansion of its boundaries and not for any funding, whereas both Pine Run and Manor Conservancy are seeking expansions, excuse me, seeking funding, while Pine Run is also seeking to expand their boundaries. The department recommends all three applications since it's essential that expansion requests also be submitted to the state for approval, even if funds are not being requested. The priority order for, that we recommend is that the Pine Run Watershed Legacy Area, which is in Districts 2, 3, and 4, Manor Rural Legacy Area, which is in Council District 3. And with, with approval, these will be forwarded to the state's Rural Legacy Advisory Committee for their review and, and hopeful their approval. So we request approval of this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Mr. Lafferty on this? Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Lafferty.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We are going to go to, we're back to, we're actually back to bills for first consideration. And this is going to be Major Wedick. And Major Wedick's going to talk to us about SRO adequate coverage grant.
Mr. Chairman, members of council.
Thank you.
We come forth seeking approval for a grant that the Baltimore County School System has put in for, for the SRO adequate coverage. The grant comes from the Maryland Center for Safe Schools. There's no county money added. The amount is $1,219,820, and it will supply officers for after-school games, activities, and such for 51 Baltimore County schools, 27 middle schools, and 24 high schools for sporting events and other type of places where we need coverage.
Okay. Do any of the members have any questions, Councilman Crandall?
I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Major Wedick. Always good to see you. Thanks for, you and the, and the department for your, your work on this grant. I just have a question on timing. So if, I mean, this is a bill, not a fiscal matter, so this receives second consideration at the next work session, correct? April 30. Is there any timeline that we should be aware of to suspend those rules, Major? In terms of timing, or we, is it, so April 30th, and then we vote? When is the vote, when would the vote be scheduled? So, so the first, first meeting in May is when the council would be set to approve this?
Which is a normal cycle, Mr. Crandall. It's our.
Oh, it is. You're right.
Monthly, 30-day cycle.
I'm sorry, the chair got me all wound up earlier, so.
Are you still wound up, Councilman Crandall?
No, I'm wound down now. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I just.
Wound down or unwound?
I just didn't, with the extra works, I didn't want us to be in a position to be delaying something that's important that's already been, basically been done.
Okay.
I'll be quiet now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Crandall.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes, Councilman Jones.
So I guess wanted to tell Major Wedick that, you know, we certainly appreciate them seeking this grant, and I think it's an excellent use of these funds, which is to pardon a lot of the activities that our students participate after school. I think the SRO program has been a tremendous success, and I'm very proud that Baltimore County has been doing nothing but expanding the program and being as supportive as we can over the years. I don't think that there's anything more important than to provide a certain level of protection for our students who go to school each and every day. So I guess wanted to chime in and, and tell you congratulations on the great work that you're doing, and I certainly will be supportive of the additional funds to provide additional resources after schools.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Any additional questions for Major Wedick? Okay. Major Wedick, could I ask you to stick around because, for the next item, because I want you to report back to Chief McCullough on this, okay? We're going to take, we're going to do something a little unconventional right now.
So we have all been told that.
Turn it over to Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. We have all been informed, and we all know, that this is the last public session of the county council to which our esteemed current CAO will be attending. Her last day, I believe, is Friday. And so the council requested that, that a resolution recognizing your incredible service be prepared and presented to you. And since this is it, we are presenting this now. It's been my pleasure as secretary to be able to work fairly closely with Stacy Rogers, the current county administrative officer, on matters coming before the council from the administration. We've, I've gotten to know Ms. Rogers, and I feel very fortunate to be able to present this resolution on the council's behalf, because, to, to express my appreciation as well. Do you want me to read it, or do you?
Go ahead and read it, yeah.
Okay. A Baltimore County Council Resolution, "Be it hereby known to all that the Baltimore County Council offers sincerest congratulations to Stacy L. Rogers, who is retiring after over five years of faithful and dedicated service to the people of Baltimore County. After graduating from the University of Maryland Baltimore County with a bachelor's degree in psychology, obtaining a master's degree in public administration from the University of Baltimore, and also graduating from the Harvard University John F. Kennedy School of Government Leadership Institute, Stacy Rogers has held numerous executive-level positions during her career. This includes being appointed Deputy Secretary for Programs at the Maryland Department of Human Resources in February 2008, being appointed Senior Advisor to the Deputy Commissioner of the Social Security Administration during the Obama administration in February 2014, and later that same year, Agency Chief of Staff, and more recently, being appointed Director of the Baltimore City Department of Social Services, serving more than 245,000 individuals and families annually. In March 2019, Baltimore County government was fortunate to have Ms. Rogers named County Administrative Officer by County Executive John A. Oshewski Jr., the first African-American and only the second woman to serve in that office. During her time as CAO, Stacy has been instrumental in moving county government further into the 21st century, promoting best practices and leading a data-driven approach to government processes and services. Madam CAO has also been active in the community, including the Providence Baptist Church, where she is a dedicated member and Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. Stacy has also been a committed mentor and resource person for other young professionals, and was named one of 2022 Maryland's Top 100 Women Business Leaders and inducted as a 2022 National Academy of Public Administrators Fellow. The council joins with those assembled today, April 9, 2024, to celebrate Stacy L. Rogers' well-deserved retirement, to honor her dedication to the highest ideals of public service, and to wish her continued health and happiness in retirement."
All right. Congratulations, Stacy. Well deserved, Stacy. So, Major Wedick, you got that to report back to Chief McCullough?
I do, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, be recognized.
Absolutely.
One last time, to, to the members of the council and those assembled, it has been my deepest honor to serve in this capacity. Recently, I've just been replaying the last five years, just the different things and challenges that we have had to face as a government. And I just want to thank you for always being there with us to do what we have felt was the right thing to do and in the best interest of the citizens that we're charged to serve and for our county. It hasn't always been easy, because we faced things in the last five years that no one would have ever imagined that we would face in our careers. You know, a global pandemic, all types of situations, and even more recently, the tragedy, tragedy with the Key Bridge. But I am just humbled and just so grateful to each of you for spending the time that we've spent together, working together. I mean, I can look across the dais and every person seated, I've done something with, either explained what we were trying to do in the administration, or helped move things that should have moved years ago, Councilmember Marks. I mean, it, some things were just like illogical to me why they didn't happen. But it's been my pleasure, and these five years, I will say, will bring me great joy in the future. I will say I'm not leaving Baltimore County. I am a resident, and I will be. not leaving Baltimore County. I am a resident, and I will be watching, and not from afar, just being here as a resource, but also being here to express at the other table if there are issues that I feel that my expertise and passion can help with. So Godspeed to each of you, and may God bless our county. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. You've done a great job here. I can tell you, when I've moved from one position to another, I look back and I ask one question: Did I make a difference? And if you answer is yes, then you did the best you could. And I think for your career and the positions that you've held, and as you move from this position, I think if you look back and ask, did I make a difference? It's an easy answer. You did, and thank you. Any of the other members? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Jones.
I wanted to take an opportunity to congratulate Ms. Rogers. You did a most excellent job as CAO, and it's been a certain, certainly a pleasure working with you. You have brought a certain level of structure and professionalism to the position, in the way you've been conducting yourself, and the processes you have put in place. And I have certainly enjoyed working with you, and watching you, and learning from you, and I wish you nothing but the very best in your future endeavors, whether it be retirement or whatever you choose to do. I'm sure you will do it well, and I guess wish nothing but the very best for you. So thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to be a part of your destiny, so to speak.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Thank you.
Councilman Cash?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Stacy, I want to thank you for your service to Baltimore County. I can't believe it's been five years. You know, when you've been in office for a long time, the time does fly, and I mean, it really flies, and you turn around, like, where did all those years go? But I want to, again, thank you for the job you've done. I've tried not to bother you too much. If there are issues, of course, I did come to you. I appreciate the time that you spent with me explaining certain things or questions that I had, and I give the same advice to everyone who's retiring, whether it's temporary or permanent, that I hope you and your husband have the opportunity to travel, and I hope you will. There's so much to see in the world, and, believe me, it's very enjoyable. So enjoy your retirement, and look back and, you know, look at what you've been able to accomplish, and it will be very satisfying to you. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Cash, and we plan to do just that.
Mr. Benjamin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say to Madam, you have made a difference, and it's been a pleasure and an honor to work with you, have you seated next to me these last four years. You will be missed. Looking forward to what you do with the next step, and just know that it's been an honor and a privilege to work with you. So thanks.
Thank you, Attorney Benjamin. It's been my pleasure as well.
Ms. Rogers, I have just one thing to say. Don't let me issue tickets while you're in retirement.
You'd always catch me working into all these hours of the night. I kept them, though. I kept your citations.
Councilman Crandall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, Mr. Benjamin, thank you for your kind words in the hallway regarding our district and the Key Bridge, and appreciate your thoughts and prayers on that.
Certainly.
And Stacy, you too. I think we talked a little while ago in the last week, so. But Stacy, you now know what a midge fly is.
Absolutely.
Probably didn't know what that was before you got this job, did you?
Did not.
So, I mean, I just bring that up because, you know, my first term, I did not enjoy such a great relationship with the CAO or the administration at that time, and you were part of, even though I tend to disagree with a lot of what your boss wants to do, the lines of communication have always been open, and it's always been professional, even amid disagreements. And you've been able to, as I said, you've been able to foster that environment, not only by your own actions and the way that you handle yourself, but the people that you direct throughout Baltimore County as well. And I think that that is certainly evident in the work that we've seen accomplished in our own district, much less throughout all the rest of our districts. So I do appreciate your service. I think that whatever you decide to do, you will be great at it. So if you're going to be a world traveler, you're going to be a great world traveler. I don't have any doubts on that. So God bless you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Crandall, and I do know the difference between a midge and a midjet. And I do correct people on that quite often. And I'll just say one other thing. I was in your district last night at Turner Station, and just driving around the county sometimes, wherever I'm at, I just smile when I think about who represents that district, and going all over the county really, and which I'll continue to do, but thinking about each of you in my travels.
Councilman Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and which, I guess we're in a round robin of praise, which I'm happy to load in with, and just say that I found myself lucky to have, one, gotten to know you in my other capacity, serving in the state, and as the Chair of the Baltimore County Delegation, working with you and the administration, fighting for state dollars to make sure that the projects that we do have move forward. And then coming here in a short period of time, my only regret is that I haven't been able to spend more time to work with you. Wanted to learn from you, too, in your position, as I'm learning about this one, and just want to say that I, I've already said it's a pleasure and a privilege, but just the historic nature of your role, and in the time in which you obtained your job, and what you've been able to do with poise and grace, which we all find when we join a job, we find the things that we like and the things we don't like. And knowing what you've had to go through to get here, and that you have earned your retirement twice over, I just appreciate the opportunity, one, to work with you in the short time that I have been able to. So thank you for the work that you've done.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Young. It's been a pleasure as well, and each of you, we've had different things that we had to work on, but it's all for the greater good. If it's anything that I will share with my mentees is I continue to groom leaders for these positions, because let's face it, we're not going to stay forever. Do we have a succession plan behind us? But it's working for the greater good and with excellence, because the legislative branch has a role, the executive branch has a role, but when people look at us, they look at the government and how we work together to do things.
Councilman Marks?
I will wrap this up, I think. You and I share something. We have both worked at every level of government, federal, state, and local, and I think you will agree with me, this is one of the most, I think, interesting and exciting and dynamic. And the people see the results of what we do directly. All the levels are important, but this is where the rubber meets the road. Thank you for all of your help to me personally, especially with Mount Vista, and good luck in the future.
That's one of my favorite projects, to say you just have to stand down until it gets done. But I can't wait until the improvements are made. I'm going to go out there, just because. Thank you, Councilmember Marks.
And Ms. Rogers, when you're not traveling and you're at home, you can just think about the beautiful Second District of Baltimore County. Okay. Well done, Ms. Rogers. Okay, we're going to move to the next item, and let me find my place. We are going to move to, we're going to move back to, we're going to move to Councilman Marks' property tax credits.
Thank you very much. Bill 1224 expands the eligibility of the property tax credit to any law enforcement official who became disabled as a result of or in the course of such an employment in Maryland. I'm going to be offering amendment that will narrow this quite a bit, so that it only includes Maryland State Troopers. I have asked for a fiscal impact from the auditors. I think they've done an excellent job with this. It's a fiscal impact that they estimate at $281,644. I think we've done a good job of really narrowing the focus of this legislation, and I urge your support.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Marks. Any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts? Okay. Do we have any speakers on this, Ms. Belcastra?
Yes, we have one speaker, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
It is Graham Burton.
This is virtual.
Let me try to make him a panelist. Let me try this one. Mr. Burton, you are on. I may begin your testimony when you're ready.
All right. I'm having trouble here. Can you hear me now?
So we can hear you now.
Okay, great. I had to unmute myself for some reason. I think last time you had unmuted me, so that's where the confusion lied. I'm so sorry. Good afternoon, members of the council. Thank you for having me again this evening. I testified, I guess it is now two weeks ago, in favor of Bill 1224. I am a retired, or medically retired, Maryland State Trooper. I've done a lot of work behind the scenes to try to find ways to make this work, if you will. I've called each one of the council members, spoke with them, left messages, and I've dug deep into information to find out who and what is behind the current property tax credit. Currently, there are 59 citizens of Baltimore County who benefit from this disabled property tax credit already. Those are members of the Baltimore County Police Department. You know, the Maryland State Police is a primary law enforcement agency, just the same as Baltimore County Police. When I worked Golden Ring Barrack, we responded to calls on 695 and 83, just as if Baltimore County Police would, too. So I fought for my life on the side of the road, just as Baltimore County Police does, and I feel we should be entitled to the same. I did do some legwork and did some PIA requests. I found that the information provided by the Maryland Pension System was a little off because they included ordinary disabilities. They're not applicable to this, because only special disabilities are those that are injured in the line of duty. So the numbers that came back from the pension system are high, so that fiscal impact will come down. It also includes spouses that are benefiting when the law enforcement officer has already passed. So as it's currently written, I'm not sure that this would apply to those members. So that would also bring down the fiscal impact. Again, it's less than 1% of total operating budget that we're asking for. Most of the disabled troopers actually move out of state. From the list I had, it was over 600, and 198 of them have moved out of the state. It's also kind of dispersed amongst the counties. There's no one county that has more than the other. Hartford has 47, Carroll has 45, Anne Rundle has 33, and I believe we are at 38, but that includes the ordinary disability, which is not a practical number. So it's pretty evenly spread out to our neighboring counties. I don't think that this will be a huge impact. I spoke with Amanda Carr at the executive office, and she said the fiscal impact is minimal. Also, when I spoke to the HR at the Maryland State Police Headquarters, they informed me that two troopers, one including myself, have medically retired with a disability retirement since 2020. That's less than one a year. So again, there's not many of us, but I fought for my life on the side of the road, and I feel I should be entitled to this. Back in 2009, the county council, every member voted in favor, and I ask you all to do the same. I'm open to your questions or concerns. I know I spoke with Councilman Cash, was it last week, for over hour and a half. I know he proposed an amendment, but after our conversation, I think his viewpoint had changed, and he was more understanding as to all I've been through, between surgeries and basically my pay being cut in half. I don't want to uproot my family from Baltimore County, but, you know, when other counties offer different benefits, it's tough, especially when you're faced with financial hardship. I ask for your vote, and I hope you stand behind myself and Councilman Marks for this bill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Mr. Burton? Okay. Thanks again, Mr. Burton.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is appointment, this is, I'm sorry, this is Lauren Buckler, Basic Services Map.
1424, but we can do that later.
We're going to come back.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the county council. For the record, I'm Lauren Buckler, Deputy Director for DPWT. I'm here to discuss the 2024 draft basic services maps for public water sewer systems as well as transportation. On February 15, 2024, the Baltimore County Planning Board voted in accordance with Section 4A 02.3.1 of Baltimore County Zoning Regulations to recommend adoption of the proposed 2024 basic service maps and to forward the maps onto county council for further review and adoption. The basic service maps are part of the countywide master plan standard. These maps are updated annually per the county's zoning regulations and include areas that are deficient in public water, sewer, and transportation. To recap last year's basic service maps, on June 1, 2023, Bill 1923 was signed and enacted by Baltimore County Council, adopting the revised maps for 2023. For this year's basic service maps, there are no deficiencies in the public water system as defined by the zoning regulations. The sewer section reports one deficient area, which is the Richland Manor area. This is the same as was reported last year. The transportation section reports 11 deficient intersections. This is also the same as last year's submitted maps. As you may recall, deficiencies are defined for each basic service as follows: A deficiency in the water system is determined by a failing fire flow test that measures the residual water pressure at the nearest public fire hydrant. A deficiency in the public water system is defined by a lack of capacity to treat the sewage flows. And a deficiency in the transportation system is defined by a lack of capacity to provide the standard level of service within arterial and collector intersections. Levels of service designated an E and an F are considered to be deficient. I do want to thank Jeanette with DPWT. She puts together all this background for this, and she's here tonight, and it's really a lot of work for her to pull this together from all the different sections and get it submitted. So with that, I will take any questions that you have.
Any of the members, Councilman Marks?
Richland Manor, that will come off this list soon, right?
It will come off the list once the pump station is built and it's connected to the public sewer system.
Okay.
And that's, that project is in process.
Right, and you've provided me information. I appreciate that. So thank you.
Okay. Again, thank you. This is a bill for first consideration, so we'll be at this one more time. So just wanted to let you know, Ms. Buckler, because we have new procedures in place. Yes, Councilman Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, thank you for the reminder that it's under first consideration, because I wanted to, maybe in between now and the next work session, I'd be interested in knowing of issues that have been on in previous iterations of this in previous years, how that have been on in previous iterations of this in previous years, how long has the longest project still been sitting on this potential list? And we can talk more about it in the interim. So ones that have been on for multiple years, and the purpose being a conversation about, like, are we just going to keep putting something on a list and not finding a solution? Or how does that work from year to year? Do we just keep adding it on to a list and recognizing that it's deficient without a plan to fix it? So we can talk in the midterm, but I wanted to make sure. Thank you for that reminder.
Thank you, Councilman Young.
Thank you.
Any of the other members? Okay, thank you, Ms. Buckler. Next item will be...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We do have a speaker for this item.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bel Castro.
Sure.
And I think the speaker looks like she's right.
Julia Nickel.
Ms. Nichols?
Who's here in person?
Public speaking is not my bailiwick, so it's...
Mine neither.
Weird with this. So I'm a resident of District 1, Councilman Young, and I'm in Councilman Koch's area, in the Spring Lake area, and my mother's mid-century colonial. But I'm speaking about Basic Services Maps. We know Basic Services Maps affects adequate public facilities. I'm here to remind the council that they should be considering the planning board recommendations on multi-agency reviews with their vote. And that was the planning board vote in February, but you all will be voting very soon on this. The 2024 transportation map does not have an Ellicott Mills carve-out or an Owella Historical District carve-out in District 1. The planning board voted for no arbitrary or capricious carve-outs in the failing traffic sheds in District 1. There are three failing traffic areas, and it's a significant issue. Ellicott Mills and Owella are in my neighborhood. An arbitrary and capricious carve-out in legislation by you does not change the real fact that the areas are impacted by significant and intractable congestion and safety concerns. While Maryland law considers neighborhood as a flexible area having aggregate features within immediate environs, all neighborhoods within failing traffic sheds deserve consideration of adequate public facilities and safety. The purpose of Basic Services Maps is to draw attention to the needs for correction, not to make matters infinitely worse. I ask you to consider Bill 1724 very carefully and not to enact arbitrary and capricious carve-outs that are not in harmony with zoning regulations. And I want to thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Nickel. Any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts for Ms. Nickel? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And you did great, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is Bill 1424, Councilman Artell, zoning regulations.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be very quick. This bill is kind of a, it's a follow-up to a bill we passed earlier in the, or actually end of last year, where we added the ability to have a civic organization in a CB zone. And what we had really intended for that language to be was to allow for a fraternal organization, specifically an American Legion, or an FOP, or something of that nature. So we've added that language to the bill so that it's clear that you can have a fraternal organization if you wanted to in a CB zone. So that's all this bill does, and hopefully I will get everyone's support, and it's pretty cut and dry.
Thank you, Councilman Artell. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with the Councilman Artell? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move to the next item. Councilman Crandall, you had a comment for Councilman Artell? Okay, we'll move to the next item, which is Item 1524, Councilman Mark, zoning regs for out-of-water storage facilities.
Yes, I'm going to, I've informed the community organizations this will not be discussed today, and I'm going to request that this bill be laid over.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is, this is Councilman Jones, Revitalization Property Tax Credit. Councilman Jones?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I really appreciate everyone taking a minute to hear me as relates to a property tax credit because I'm going to be talking about the Metro Center, which is Baltimore County's only transit-oriented development. And when we think about mixed use and redevelopment, this is the example that we should have for all else to look at and understand what we're talking about. Early on, when I first took office, you know, you had Owens Mills Mall was a dead mall. You had Solo Cup Factory going out of business, hundreds of acres sitting there, and you're talking about a large surface parking lot at the Metro Center. Well, now, if you look at the revitalization that took place at Owens Mills, I call it the triple crown of Owens Mills, where you have the dead mall becoming mill station. You have the large surface parking lot for the subway becoming Metro Center, and the Solo Cup Factory becoming Foundry Row. I mean, this is an example of what we're talking about. So now let's focus in on the Metro Center while we're here today. The Metro Center is Baltimore County's only transit-oriented development. It has been a tremendous success, to which others in the state and the region have been looking at, trying to figure out how exactly it's been done. Baltimore County has been supportive, and I would like Baltimore County to continue to be supportive of the Metro Center. Again, we think about all the conversations we had with the master plan in terms of mixed use. You talked about the first mixed-use bill, the carrot bill that's under consideration today. We are talking about places like the Metro Center and what it has to offer. It is a truly mixed-use development. And not only does this tax incentive have the support of the community, it also has the support of the business community. Also, first of all, thank you for indulging me. I'm out of town right now, but when I'll be, when I'm back, I will share the Sage Policy Group report that shows that this is a good deal for Baltimore County. And as it relates to a source of pride for Owens Mills, Baltimore County, nothing highlights that more. In addition to the Ravens staying at the Marriott Hotel and Owens Mills at the Metro Center, three NFL teams came and rented the entire Marriott Owens Mills. And you got to remember, these teams have the ability and the capacity to stay at any hotel they want in this region, whether it be Anne Arundel County, Howard County, downtown Baltimore, you name it. They have the ability and the capacity to stay at any one that they want, yet they stayed at the Owens Mills Metro Center. The Marriott at the Owens Mills. I think that is a tremendous pride, sense of pride for us here in Baltimore County. And when all the teams, when the television stations around the country were videoing them getting off their buses and getting on their buses, they always mentioned Baltimore County, Owens Mills, Marriott. And I think that's a tremendous economic boost for all of us. It's a pride. So today, this is the first reader. This bill we had put forth a long time ago. A lot of things have happened, and I'll be bringing forth additional information that will be more readily available to me, and I can share with you once we get to the second reader, so to speak. So thank you for your indulging, indulging me, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. I know we have a couple of speakers.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Jones. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share? Okay, I don't see any. So thanks again, Councilman Jones.
Sure.
Ms. Bel Castro, we have some speakers.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Our first speaker is Barack Herman.
Mr. Herman?
Good afternoon, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me fine?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Councilman. Good to see you, Miss, you know, Izzy Patoka and everybody else. Good to see my friend Julian Jones on the screen. I'm here speaking, one is my capacity as the CEO of the Jewish Community Centers. Really, I'm speaking in my role as the chairman of the Owens Mills Corporate Roundtable. You might not be familiar with the Corporate Roundtable. It's really one of the crown jewels, I think, of Owens Mills and the county, that the mission of the Roundtable is to facilitate a sense of community among the largest employers who are significantly invested in Owens Mills. And, you know, our mission is to collaborate and support Owens Mills as a destination to live, work, and play. And I've been involved in this organization in paying attention to the Metro Center, Foundry Row, development at Stevenson University, and other areas of Owens Mills over the past decade. And our members at the Roundtable include Lifebridge Healthcare First, nonprofits like Irvine Nature Center, Maryland Public Television, Stevenson, CCBC, and about 30 other organizations. We've been following this project and development very closely. We met with Howard Brown and understood what he was trying to do in Owens Mills. We asked a lot of questions. We are very much in favor of supporting this project. We've seen the economic development that's happened in Owens Mills, and many of us have benefited from that development. We've seen jobs created, the positive consequences for our community, and just the downstream effects it had on so many other smaller mom-and-pop shops, smaller stores, and the effect it had across Owens Mills. Owens Mills is really a crown jewel of the county. It's really an amazing time for the Owens Mills community, and the centerpiece of Owens Mills is the Metro Center. As the county's only TOD, we are fully supportive of Bill 1824, encouraging the full build-out of the Metro Center. It ticks many of our boxes at the Roundtable, relieving the pressure to build in other areas, supporting the use of the rail line, and in both instances, being a positive for the environment. So we encourage the entire Baltimore County Council to please see the Metro Center, see the vibrancy, the diversity, and really what a jewel it's been for our Owens Mills community as we continue to really make Owens Mills a great place to live, work, and play. And we really encourage this continued development. We've all really, in many ways, benefited from the continued advancement of Owens Mills.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Mr. Herman?
Thank you, Barack.
It feels weird to call you Mr. Herman, so I'm just going to call you Barack.
I liked it for a little bit, Mr. Patoka.
Okay, we don't have any questions, so thanks again, Barack. Okay, Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is David Adler. For some reason, I'm not able to make Mr. Adler a panelist. Let me see if I can just unmute him.
Okay.
I can't do that either.
Yes, Councilman Jones?
While Chris will work on that connection, let me just add a couple of things that I neglected to mention, but I just wanted to get a little deeper into the transit-oriented development so that people understand that this is the place where we should want to actually increase density. This is the place where, for every person that gets on that train and go into downtown Baltimore or western Baltimore or eastern Baltimore County to work, I mean, eastern Baltimore City to work, hopefully one day we'll get it connected to west, to eastern Baltimore County. That's one less car off the road. It helps with pollution and congestion and you name it. So this is the type of place that we should be increasing density, and that's exactly what we've been trying to do there, and I think it's been working very well. There's a number of apartment complexes there now or towers, and hopefully we can get some more. And I don't want to get into too much detail, but some of the issues, I'll talk about it next time, in terms of the land and what has to happen and how it got to the certain condition that it is.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Sure.
Ms. Bel Castro, do we have any...
I believe I have Mr. Adler on as a panelist, but I'm not sure if he's able to speak. Are you there, Mr. Adler?
Mr. Adler?
Ah, are you there, Adler? Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. You may begin your testimony.
Good evening, Chairman Patoka and members of the county council. My name is David Adler, and I'm Vice President at David S. Brown Enterprises. I'm here to ask for your support on Bill 1824. David S. Brown owns and manages 4 million square feet of retail and office and over 2,000 apartments predominantly in Baltimore County. About 20 years ago, we embarked on creating Baltimore's first state-designated transit-oriented development. Metro Center Owens Mills is a 46-acre mixed-use development built around a Baltimore metro subway. Transit-oriented developments are high-density, mixed-use communities close to public transportation. The goal with Metro Center was to create an urban core with a mix of uses to foster the use of the existing public transportation infrastructure. The plan is for Metro Center to eventually include 1,700 residential units and 1 million square feet of retail office and hotels. Of course, with a 30-year project, market conditions will dictate the ultimate mix. Yet to be constructed are several high-rise residential buildings, more office buildings, and more hotels, which are a critical component to the success of this project. We asked the Sage Policy Group to analyze the economic impacts of the project. Dr. Anavon Basu, an economist with Sage Policy, is unable to attend this work session. However, we have submitted a video of his testimony and a written copy of all of it to its members of the county council. Mr. Basu recognizes the economic benefits of Metro Center as simply massive, and of course, Baltimore County's only state-designated transit-oriented development. Recently, the county council adopted the 2030 Master Plan, which designated Metro Center as part of a regional commercial node. This designation emphasizes the need to intensify redevelopment efforts and transform land use paradigms. Metro Center is without a doubt a one-of-a-kind in Baltimore County. All the mixed-use development at Metro Center to date has been completed without the benefit of the county's valuable revitalization tax credit program. 22 officially-designated revitalization districts have been created in this county, and some of them expanded after initial creation to make redevelopment possible and attainable. Metro Center is deserving of inclusion in this tax credit program to realize its full potential within a master plan-designated node. We thank Councilman Jones for recognizing the economic benefits of Metro Center and what it will provide and continue to provide in this community. And we are introducing Bill Number 1824 so that Metro Center can achieve full mixed-use development potential. This project, when built out, will have immense transportation and economic benefits for all Baltimore County. It is my understanding that you've been provided with a letter from the Owens Mills Roundtable supporting this bill as well. I would ask for your support on Bill 1824 to help us fulfill the states and counties and our vision for Metro Center at Owens Mills. If you have any questions for me, please let me know. Thank you.
Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts? Mr. Adler?
Thank you, David.
Okay, Councilman Jones, did you have a...
No, I just wanted to thank them so much for his time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Adler? I'm sorry, Councilman...
No, no.
Mr. Adler, did you say that Sage completed a fiscal analysis on this? Mr. Adler, did you hear my question?
Yes, they did.
Okay. Councilman Jones, do you have, I was wondering if that, does that, can that be shared with the council members, the study that Sage did on this?
Yes, I can share it with everyone. As you know, I'm away, and I will do my best to hook up my other computer and see if I can get it to you, but it'll certainly be there before the next work session, and also a video testimony by Anavon Basu.
Yeah, I do think we have time, Councilman Jones, because this is the, this is first consideration, so we'll have another work session. So, we do, given the new, I'm calling them the young procedures, given the young procedures in place, we have a little bit more time on these types of issues.
Mr. Patoka, Mr. Chairman, I did receive an email from, from Attorney David Karceski at about 2:00 this afternoon, and he attached both of those items, so I will definitely make sure that they get circulated to the members.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Marks?
Councilman Ortel and I are going to leave right now, if that's all right. We have a retirement ceremony for the two experienced officers at the White Marsh Precinct, and we can never make that meeting because it's 6:00 in Perry Hall, so we're gonna, we're gonna go right now. Sorry, we have to miss the last two contracts.
Okay. Yes, please do. We still have a quorum, so we can finish up the council business. Thank you so much for... Sure. Okay. Sure, have fun, drive safely. Next item is Ms. Deb Schindel, property management, a couple of contracts, couple of contracts. I think, Ms. Schindel, you're going to close it out for us. Is that right, Mr. Secretary? This is item last? We had tried to make you...
Yes, sir.
Ms. Schindel, we've been making efforts to get you to go first, so, because you're always at the end.
No problem.
We'll continue to try.
No problem.
Ms. Schindel has two items, so there is a penultimate item that she would be doing first.
Oh, okay, so this is the penultimate item, and then the final item?
That's right, there you go.
Okay, excellent.
I don't mind at all, sir.
Thank you for that clarification, Mrs. Secretary.
No problem.
Thanks.
Good evening, Councilman Chair and members. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with KLNBLLC to provide an advisory service for real estate transactions such as leasing opportunities, conducting research to find purchase opportunities for the county to buy and build for designated purposes such as fire stations, police stations, on an as-needed basis. In no event shall the total compensation paid to the contractor exceed the sum amount of the County Council approval appropriated amount during the entire term of the contract. The agreement shall be in effect when it is, it has been appropriately signed by all parties and when executed by the county through December 17th to 24, and then the county reserves the right to renew this contract agreement for two one-year renewal options. This was a competitive bid contract that went through the city of Salisbury. It's a cooperative agreement. Obviously, we use it to be much more efficient and save us time rather than us having to bid, go through the bid process. They were chosen for the best qualified value and experience, and we use both general and capital funding for this type of contract.
Thank you, Ms. Schindel. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Ms. Schindel? Okay, thanks, Ms. Schindel. We can go to the next item.
Last one, sir. The administration is requesting approval of a contract for the sale of 222 North Marlin Avenue, Baltimore Marlin 21221, for the expansion of the existing Essex Police Precinct Station. The 1,200-square-foot residence is to be purchased for $350,000. We are purchasing it and plans to actually demo it and use the property for our stormwater management as part of our new construction for the addition for the existing police station.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schindel. Do any of the members, Councilman Crandall?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Ms. Schindel, thank you for your work on this. I do want to thank the administration, the county executive, for following through on the refurb and addition to Precinct 11 in Essex. It's, it's a building that definitely needs some TLC and some, and some amenities for our men and women in blue. This was a follow-up to a community ask, and I believe the ask was made during Budget Town Hall and, and through various other channels, where this is something that the community felt strongly about, that we wanted to support the, the precinct and get them a better home. So, I'm appreciative of the, of the effort so far, and this is indicative of, of what needs to be done in order to see this project through. So, I'm, I'm very thankful, and on behalf of our, our community over in Essex and Precinct 11, thank you for all involved.
You're welcome. And, sir, we're having a community engagement this month, and I'm sure we'll get that information to you so that the public can see what it looks like so far conceptually.
I know they'll be, they'll be waiting for that, and, and I do appreciate the foresight that, and just the, in canceling that, that meeting, which was Tuesday, the day that the, the bridge collapsed, and that was a, whoever made that call for the administration, that was, that was the right thing to do, to put that off, considering the circumstances.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, any...
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Ms. Schindel? Okay, thanks very much, Ms. Schindel, for your patience...
You're welcome.
...and for your presentation. Okay, is there any additional business to come before the council?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.